Good evening, the board has now returned from closed session and will begin the regular session in Key Union School District Board of Trustees meeting. First off, Mr. Green is absent tonight in a family emergency about five o'clock, so he was ready to come to the meeting and he had to go handle that, so let's wish him the best of luck for tonight. Four point one, report up to closed session items, we have nothing to report out. Do we have motions approved? A first, a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Four point two, approval amendment of agenda? We have none, correct?
Yeah.
Anything from the board? Alright, we have motion to approve the agenda as is?
I have motion approved.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Moving on to flag salute. Oh, Mr. Green, tonight, Green, you're on the flag salute.
I declare the release to the United States of America and to the three public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to invitation, Mr. Board Trustees, we only have one, correct?
Uh, yes.
Alright, I'll start with from Ms. Alah, Alah.
Yes, actually, I believe she requested that I be the one to read it, so I have no problem.
I don't think you'd like someone.
So she, I believe that the request was that I go ahead and read it, it was addressed to me and to the Keys Union School District Board. I wanted to write you, or to you, considering how the past ten months have been going for our family. A little bit about me, I graduated from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo with a major in liberal studies and then went on to complete my teaching credential in two thousand and three. I have two emphasis, one in Spanish and the other in child development. I've worked for the Livingston School District, Los Banos Unified, as well as Turlock Unified School District. I currently work for Jessica's House, a local nonprofit in Turlock, as the school support coordinator. I have completed multiple trauma and grief training programs while working there the past five years. My background is primarily working in supporting and teaching our future generation. Children are my whole part. I'm also a mother of three amazing children, in my opinion. They all attend keys to learning charter in our four, six, and eight. My husband operates a dairy in Hillmark and we have been married for almost seventeen years. We both value education and have seen our children flourish at KTL. The staff and families we interact with are exceptional. The reason, reason I am writing to you today is because it is beginning to be a lot of waiting for us to understand what is going on with the plans to reopen Keys Union School District. There have been multiple school districts that opened back in the fall. What a letdown at the beginning of the school year to hear that there was no initiation to complete the waiver. Rumor is, it was about months and the job of completing the paperwork in time to get the waiver signed. Back when I was hopeful and patient that something was going to change soon. Our families stuck to it, kept logging into Zoom meetings, going bi-monthly to collect items that were needed for distance learning. Instruction is not ideal online. There are times the internet is down, students are interrupted, and coursework is missing or not communicated well. We have shed many tears here at our house. I am trying to balance working from home and luckily, this has not been too much of a hardship with us. Since I have a teacher's credential, they know how to work with kids. What about families that have no working parents or single parents? Or have two working parents and/or single parents? How are families in your district able to pay for tutors or make sure that their students are logging in on time and getting their work done? Did you think about how far behind these kids who are only playing video games will end up? What about the students whose only safe place is school? They are stuck in abusive and scary places. What about those students at Keys? What are you doing to support the check on them? They don't only need free lunch, they also need stability and structure from safe adults. I read through the plan to go back, should we be able to, and I would like to challenge you to revisit what you think is possible. You see, I do not think we should only be concerned for TK through second graders. Do you think it is safer for students in grades through twelfth grades to stay home? Did it ever cross your mind to consider mental health, pre-teens and teenagers? This is already a tricky time in their adolescence. These kids are more likely to have time to join the games, try drugs, and teen pregnancy is possibly on the rise. The future of Keys community is at risk here. The Keys Union School District plans to go back fifty percent when we have had ten months to get classrooms ready. And prep schools to be safer and compliant does not make a lot of families at KTL charter very happy. It feels like Keys Union School District is capable of more. I know high schools and middle schools within a twelve mile radius open weekly with end class instruction. We would hate to leave Keys Unified, but we will have to. The mental health of my sixth grader has not been stable for months now. I know of multiple families planning to leave and this continues into two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two academic school year. To the school board, I do not know you personally, but I am very disappointed in your actions. What a letdown you each have been to students in our district. Let the families decide if it is appropriate for us to send our kids to school or not. You should have every school in Keys Union School District open to some capacity by now. Sincerely, Melissa A. Lo.
Alright, thank you.
Just to, to share, I responded and I tried calling and have received a response as well.
Alright, thank you. And I think for the viewers at home, it's the first time your mics really works. Moving on to announces, seven point one, two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, school year calendar is coming next month.
Yes, we are still, we are trying to follow the course as we usually do in developing our calendar to our feeder school districts, so to the Turlock School District. And so we will bring you those calendars for approval at the March. There's still some thought of, of some possible changes as we look into how will we address the gaps in learning, will we have an extended school year or those things, so we're still looking at those.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to eight point one, staff reports. Any questions or concerns for the staff? Alright, we read their reports. Moving on to consent, agenda items. Actions prepared for consent counter are consistent and with adopted approved policies in the district and are deemed routine in nature. It will be acted upon in one motion without discussion unless members of the board request that item be removed from the consent counter. In that event, it will be taken up in order indicated on the main agenda. Nine point one to nine point four, any questions or concerns? We have motion to approve all as a whole? Have a first, have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point one, approval of certified classified confidential management personnel actions. Any questions or concerns? We have a number two. Do we have motion to approve? We have a first, we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point two, approval of Keys Elementary School roofing bids and material proposal. Mr. Brazil, you have anything to add?
Uh, no, we followed the bidding process and the supplies are about fifty thousand and the bid, the women bid was of ninety, approximately ninety-four thousand dollars.
Alright, and this is just part of our five-year plan to replace roofs, correct?
Correct.
Any questions or concerns from the board? We have motion to approve? We have a first, we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point three, approval of KTA MOU reopening agreement. Mr. Brazil?
Uh, we are bringing before you the MOU that we've worked with KTA or the Keys Teachers Association for reopening. Uh, we ask that the board approve that MOU or that agreement.
Any questions or concerns from the board? We have motion to approve? We have a first, we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point four, approval of CSEA tentative agreement one percent increase to CSEA salary schedules retro for twenty twenty-one fiscal year, including overtime and extrajudy pay. And two percent one-time bonus calculated on base contract paid for twenty twenty-one school year. Mr. Brazil?
So, we're asking that the board approve this. This is part of the negotiating process with California School Employees Association and our local bargaining unit. Um, we follow the guidelines set before us as a negotiating team from the district office based on what the board had given us authority to do so. And so I'm asking that you agree to the one percent increase to the CSEA salary schedules that go retro back to twenty twenty-one. And the two percent off schedule that's a one-time bonus calculated on the base contract for the year of twenty twenty-one.
Any questions or concerns? We have motion to approve?
I have motion approved.
Oh, I'm gonna ask this again, let's see who gets it. Do we have motion to approve? Ah, I got you. Uh, we have a first, we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point five, approval of twenty twenty-one ACIS one percent increase plus additional two percent off schedule compensation?
So typically, when we approve our classified agreement, we also include programs like the ACIS, which is the after-school program. And so the, the terms are exactly the same, the one percent on and two percent off the salary schedule.
We're gonna have a next couple items be all the same kind of topic, but uh, if you have any discussions, please let me know. Any discussion on this one? Alright, we have motion to approve?
I have motion that we approve.
Yeah, this is gonna be a tough night. Alright, do we have motion to approve?
Motion approved.
I have a first, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Moving on to... Ten point six, approval of twenty twenty-one classified CSEA one percent increase plus additional two percent off schedule compensation? Same topic, any questions or concerns? Motion to approve? Have a first, have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval, uh, ten point seven, approval of two, twenty twenty-one classified management personnel one percent increase plus additional two percent off schedule compensation? Same, same topic?
Same topic, absolutely, just a part of the management.
Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve? Have a first, we have a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Ten point eight, approval of twenty twenty-one confidential one percent increase plus additional two percent off schedule compensation? Could you just explain what confidential, please?
Yes, a confidential employee is one that is not represented by the bargaining unit. Uh, and they handle confidential personnel or other related items that cannot be disclosed. And, for example, the superintendent secretary or someone who does human resources, those are individuals or, uh, that's basically. What I also want to say is that both of all of these items, what you're doing is you're approving on one item, you're approving the increase. The other, you're approving the new salary schedules and that's just a normality that we have to follow for the county office of ed. Um, in order to, to have things properly approved and, and ready to submit to their financial office.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I have motion approved.
We have a first, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Ten point nine, approval of twenty twenty-one preschool one percent increase plus additional two percent off schedule, same as all but. Questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
On motion.
A first, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, ten point ten, approval of district safety plan revised draft to include additional documents of the COVID nineteen prevention plan, CPP, and the Keys supplemental handbook for reopening of schools and safety plan. Mr. Brazil?
Uh, this is, every year, the safety plan has to be reviewed and brought to the board by March first for approval. Uh, and this year, there were quite a number of changes, but truly, they were to be in compliance with the COVID nineteen regulations. And so, uh, this is simply being brought to you with those additional handbooks or pieces of, of information that are going to be tied to the safety plan.
Alright, any questions or concerns? Do we have motion to approve?
I have motion that we approve.
We have a first, we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Ten point eleven, approval of special education local plan area Sefa, local plan twenty nineteen, twenty fiscal plan.
So this is kind of a housekeeping item that every district has to look over, the special education local plan of the Sefa, we call it Sefa. Which basically runs special ed programs throughout the, the county. Um, and we ask that the board approve their fiscal plan, the ACIS.
Alright, any questions or concerns? Motion to approve? Have a first, we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of resolution twenty twenty-one oh nine, establish a student body activity special revenue fund oh eight. Mr. Brazil?
Sure, this is in, in order for us to meet audit compliance. Uh, we need to establish this fund, which is zero weight, and we're asking that the board approve that tonight. And it's to address student body activities and special revenues.
Any questions or concerns? Do we have motion to approve? We have a first, we have a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point thirteen, approval of reopening Keys schools, once approved by the county public health with the, with a week to prepare staffing and instructional schedules. Mr. Brazil?
Um, the, basically, the plan that we're submitting to the board to reopen is based on public health, making the designation that we have reached the, uh, kind of the target of twenty-five cases, uh, cases per hundred thousand. Uh, once that happens, we are notified that we've reached that, uh, and then there are five consecutive days that we must remain at that level. And on that six day, then you are allowed to open, um, this obviously has to be a week date, but it would, that, that's the, that is basically what we are, um, waiting upon. And what I'm asking that the board, um, proceed with approving so that we can open as soon as we're allowed to.
Alright, any questions or concerns? Could you, uh, explain if a family doesn't want to bring their student back to school? What, what are we doing?
Well, we are, we basically are doing two, uh, two tracks or, or two, an A and a B. Uh, where students will come two days a week, um, and for half days, they will leave at lunch, take their lunches, um, with them as a grab and go. Um, they will then go home and there will be additional Zoom in the afternoons. And on Wednesdays, it is all Zoom and a day to, um, deep clean the facilities and ensure that we are maintaining as, as clean a facility and, and as, uh, well maintained as, as possible. Um, and then we are also offering the opportunity for those individuals who do not wish to return to in-person learning to register. We are extending that registration until Friday. They may go online and register to have, uh, the students. One registration per student has to be submitted and that is so that they then continue learning, uh, long distance or, or distance learning and not be on campus. Now, detailed plans, and there's much more to that, that's kind of a simple, a simplified way of sharing it, but those are posted on our websites and on our, you know, both the, the charter has, uh, theirs on, KDS has theirs on, on their webpage. And the district has all of them as well.
And, uh, we filed a waiver way back before the governor closes, how's that going?
Well, our waiver was submitted, um, the county, uh, received it on December third. And it was posted on the waiver, um, website and subsequently removed, which caused people to say that we did not submit one. We did. And meanwhile, the governor declared a stay-at-home order, uh, and so most schools were allowed to open unless you had, you could continue if you had been, uh, opened. Um, and so now, that's the reason why we're having to wait until the case rates are twenty-five per hundred thousand so that we may open.
Alright, thank you. Any questions?
And since then, I did contact the county and I requested that they put back the date on their webpage, which they did.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board members?
And I think the twenty-five for the hundred thousand is a safe number. I think this board has held safety as the number one priority of this whole thing. I still hope it's the right decision. I know the numbers are dropping and we'll never know what the right decision is, but the number is a solid number and I think we should follow.
Some of them are stay home, some want to come in, but we gotta give them the opportunity.
Yeah. I would say more want to stay home than come in, but the kids want to come in. And it's a, it's a family decision, I understand that. Any other discussion? Yeah?
I'd like to make a motion that we reopen Keys School when the county gives approval and takes rate drop to twenty-five for a hundred thousand.
You reopen the district, not Keys School. So we have a motion to reopen the district when the county approves or the state approves and the county approve with the twenty-five for a hundred thousand ratio, correct? Any comments or discussion?
Yeah, the discussion would be that on that twenty-fifth day, that first day, will be the first day that, uh, staff is asking for the five-day out?
Right, so in the first day, we, we were recently given a kind of an update on what that took. They had originally stated that the, the five days, which was disinformation, but that the five days would only apply to when we reached the seven cases per hundred thousand, which would be for the upper grades. That we would have to maintain that for five days. Well, since then, that has been applied to also the TK through sixth grade. Um, and so we, the day that we are notified or the, uh, were told that we have reached the twenty-five for one hundred, that becomes a notification of need to staff to let them know that in five days, there's, we will be opening schools.
And I've said from day one, we open, I want TK to twelve to open at the same time. Uh, it's not what we're looking at right now because of what the government and the county are saying, but I really think we need to, to see what we can do. And, uh, I think education is important for all and it's safe for, one student should be safe for another student. And as a board, we're choosing that twenty-five number, I think that's what we need to purpose up, but we're going a step in the right direction this way.
Any other questions or concerns? So we have a motion, do we, uh, we have a first, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point one four, approval of Form seven hundred for twenty twenty-one? Is this standard housekeeping, we file this as a?
Yes, um, this is basically all of the board, uh, members, um, have to submit a Form seven hundred, which takes it that you don't have any conflict of interest basically in any of your, uh, either financial holdings or in any transaction that you have in the school.
Alright, any questions or concerns? All board members tonight have filled theirs out and you'll be in contact with Wes if you can, is that? Correct?
Thank you.
I can take it, Wes is awesome. It's a tight line, yeah, just let it happen. Uh, so we have motion to approve? We have a first, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten point one five or fifteen, approval of allowing public for in-person or audio public comments voted to table last board meeting? This is table last meeting, it was table the meeting before? Any questions or concerns? I still don't think we're ready. I still don't know if these families that want to come know what public comment is, we haven't really talked about it. But, and when they come to the, as a public comment, they're only allowed to discuss things with us, we can't conversate with them. So, if they think that they're gonna come and hold a conversation and try to, to get something to, you know, have a conversation, we, we just can't. We can only listen to it. And I, and I think that's what the, the families that, that write this stuff, that's so be what they say. Um, I think they want to have a dialogue with us and we, we just can't. It's, it's, we can't do that ten years ago, we can't do that twenty years ago. A public comment is, they share it, makes sure they want to, and then that, and then that's about it. I don't know, if they understand that, I don't know. If, if they want a conversation, I'm not sure what they, they're exactly trying to, to get. I understand I don't read exactly like they want to. Uh, Mr. Brazil read much better than I do tonight, but I, I think we need to table it until, until at least we're open.
To say we're left if we open, maybe we should open the fourth one.
May, I think that's, what we're doing is inviting people that aren't normally on campus and I think that's the longest session we need to have, but I say to table it here until we're open. That's just my...
I look forward to the day that we have a group down here too, but we just, it is a janky day.
Yeah.
We're not ready for that yet, likely.
I, I think that now is technology, we should at least have a Zoom or some kind of sort of, some persons or, uh, people, if they want to express themselves. Uh, we don't have to have a dialogue, but we gotta let the community speak. We have nothing to hide, you know, we are...
We've, we've been, we've been letting them speak, but they write these crazy letters to us all the time and they put us down. We've let them speak every single thing. They've let us call us towers, they've let us call us anything we want. They could, when we open, they can come and talk to our face. They can call to us when they're, we're shopping in the same stores as they are. We already have an issue with technology. Every single meeting, I've heard staff say they can't hear Mr. Brazil. Adding another aspect to this, it, I just don't think we're ready to.
Is there a way on Zoom to do that for all?
I mean, even if we...
People want, if they, they want to say it the way that they want to say it, I think for the majority of them. If they can't do it here, if there's a way to do it on Zoom, if it just takes a few minutes for them to do it, let's see why not do it that way. Or we know if there's something, something else, would you comment from people listening to, family members, you know, you're all, you're everything.
I'm sure too. Well...
You can't censor them.
I mean, we can't because you get a mutant. I mean, we do have technology, I believe here on the board that has technology as a, a smartphone that we could, you know, hear them out. I mean, we gotta get some kind of leeway.
I think we've provided every ample opportunity for them to get their message across. They have every right to email the principal, their superintendent, they have every right, we got this email to us. Um, our superintendent handled that. I think we've done everything we need to do as a board. They need to go to the principal, they need to go to the superintendent. We're, we're bored, we work for them, they can come to us at all times if they want to. It doesn't mean that they have to come to a board meeting in this climate that we have.
I mean, I don't think that we can, continue to just keep on tabling it, I think we just need to hit, you know...
Well, I think also in reality, when we open up, I don't think, well, how do I think that...
Absolutely, that's the truth. So I make a motion that we take this off the agenda like Mr. Vernal said, until we open schools. A first, a second? All in favor? Aye?
Yeah.
Alright. Moving on to eleven point one, COVID nineteen coronavirus.
I don't even know what to say about that right now. Um, so I'll defer to my superintendent's report. There's really no other updates other than what we are being told by public health is that, that case rates are dropping. Um, and so we, we hope that that is, uh, the case and that, uh, we get access. There's also quite a, a bit of work being done for some vaccines. So, uh, that's, that's really the current. There's also, uh, just to remind everybody, there is some legislation at the state level that is being discussed about. Um, the legislature flatouts, uh, demanding that every school open, so that's something to, to think about. Um, what I want to say is that we have followed, uh, the rules and what has been shared with us. Um, and we've done the best that we can to follow those. Um, and so I'm, I'm ready for whatever the next step is and hope that we reach the twenty-five for a hundred thousand very soon and that we're on with, uh, with reverting, uh, the... Turning around and, and beginning a school year that has been the most hellacious year, uh, for kids for sure. Um, and... for kids for sure. And I fully understand that. I feel that we did what we needed to do to be protective of students and staff. I still don't regret that. And these are not easy decisions. I appreciate the fact that a lot of times we may disagree, but that we in the end do what we feel is right for kids. And I truly believe that that's what this board has done and will continue to do.
All right, thank you. Moving on to two point two, board member comments, concerns?
Actually, I.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, no, I, I said as in perfect, I touched upon that. I do have a superintendent's report that I'd like to, to, to share. The, we are working on revision, admission and vision, which is to really begin the school year twenty one, twenty two anew with the one question asking of all of us is what do we do, why we do it and how we do it. So we're, we're working on revamping our vision and mission statement. We believe that it should be something that every one of us as a district employee, as parents, as students, that we understand what that is. So that will take some time to facilitate and ensure with parents and allowing them to have some input as well as they should and students as well. We're working on what we call a multi-tier of supports for our students, including tier one, tier two and tier three. These are levels of interventions that we will be able to support students with, any student as they especially as they transition back to in-person. There will be many issues related to emotional support and things that we need to be prepared. We're working along with the county with some grants and also Center for Human Services for some support as well as our counselors and our administration. The roping project is ready to begin and we're working on finalized schedule, whether some of it will take place during the Easter break. Vaccine pods, we're working with county public health and Turlock School District to offer all educational staff the opportunity for vaccines as soon as possible. As you all know and you see on the media, every day there are announcements of new centers or new sites that open and are ready. However, the numbers are limited and we have not moved to the one B tier or sector which allows all educators to then be vaccinated. When we do however, we've arranged again to be part of Chad and Turlock to hold what we call these pods to where all of our staff will be allowed to be vaccinated. We will do all we can to make sure that they are given time during their day to be able to to do that as much as is feasible. And we are also obviously very well aware that we cannot mandate that someone receives that vaccine. Nor are we in a position to advise anyone on which vaccine he or she should, should have received. The county approval update, again, we, we've talked about that tonight. We have submitted adjusted plans as of even today, returned to, to the county. So again, we're waiting for the twenty five for one hundred thousand. We're working on planning, actually, the, the March calendar I want to bring up again, we're again trying to make that as close to Turlock. And our staff has always been very keen on that and is aware of that. So we didn't want to bring it to you and then have to bring you revision one, revision two or revision three. So we're also working on planning for a summer school program that will address learning gaps, looking at what other surrounding districts are thinking of implementing and possibly joining in, in form of some kind of consortium or resources. And maybe just ideas so that we kind of hear what other people are doing and how they're doing it. So we've asked administrators to join in that conversation. Staff wellness boosters training is scheduled for Thursday, February eighteenth. This will be a one hour from two to three for all staff, including board. It will be a Zoom and an invite will go out. It is just a one hour program to really allow us to focus on our wellbeing and also having the best support students as they return. LCAP update and plan. It's the plan that doesn't go away. It, we are continuing to work on it. We have to do an update and additional plan for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. That continues. Budget development is in the process. Devin is working on that. It is obviously what we're entering in almost March and all of that is coming up. Substitutes, temporary increased compensation. Our surrounding districts have mostly raised their sub pays because substitutes are very difficult to find. And in order to compete with the surrounding districts, I have submitted a letter, drafted a, a draft letter to our KTA leadership to request that they allow us to increase that sub pay, not indefinitely, but through the end of this school year. So it would be basically June of two thousand twenty one to an amount that is competitive with the individual districts that are around us. The difference between our regular pay, which is a hundred and twenty dollars, a hundred and thirty is if it's a long term sub. We're asking that the amount that we cover above a hundred and twenty be covered by COVID funds, which are allowed to do that. So we're, we're hoping that that will be something that we can agree upon and get completed. And again, it's temporary. It's not long, long term. Kindergarten enrollment, we have pre, uh, pre-enrollment set up as we normally do this time of year. The numbers are thirty for, that have been pre-enrolled for, for Kinder and seven for TK. And we're continuing to advertise and to sign, sign up via webpage and social media as well as we will reopen appointments as we get closer to summer and to, I, I think some people right now, they're just so much more known that they are not necessarily excited about coming forward to, to enroll. We continue to be in the client enrollment this year, about twenty four students, which I think everyone can share from prior year. I mean, we've just discussed a lot of those implications. We are being held harmless in terms of our enrollment or ADA for funding this year. So, but we have to think that that's, that year is almost over and that the July first school year will not be self-stopping.
All right, thank you. Any questions or concerns? All right, what about administrative?
I'd just like to give a statement for board member of the year.
Thank you.
And Ronald for employee making a difference, making the ultimate difference tonight. And I'm just looking forward to the county allowing us to reopen. And I think everybody on the board wants to get back to some kind of.
All right, thank you. Mr. Green? Uh, Mr. Green, are we not here? Uh, Mr. Bernard?
Yeah, I'd just like to tell the people that, you know, us as board members, we're trying to do our best to get you back into schools in a safe manner as fast as we can. And thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Mr. Green, I've known you my whole life. I messed up your name three times in that. Go ahead.
Just like what I said, I mean, we're ready for the kids to come back. We're just waiting. And honestly, I can't wait to get to the better.
All right, am I right? It's a very disappointment. It's very disappointing being called a disappointment tonight by a community member. As a board member, we have disappointed the families or the community or the students. Every board member sitting up here, including Mr. Green that's not here, in our personal lives have not disappointed the community, students or families in this community. If you knew us, if you asked who we were, you would know everything we do in this community. All five of the board members are very active in the community. It's, it's easy to type. It's easy to say what you want to say. Ask the staff of the Tar School who we are. We are at all the events, all these letters we've only gotten from Tar School. They're not from the, the Keys or the Straddle Camps. They know who we are. They know what we're doing. Mr. Green has said he, he's split with the families that he talks to the community. Like, we talk to the community. We, we, we know. We just, we've always said the school's ready to open. We just don't feel safe. Being told that we don't have the plans ready because we didn't want to do them. The, the two weeks up until closing, I was in meetings three times a day with Mr. Brazil and the whole district office staff, making plans on how to stay open. We were in plans when we closed three times a day on how to make the plans to reopen. We've had more plans than anybody can even think of to reopen. There are still plans. We still have them. We have submitted plans to the state, to the, to the county. They've been disregarded. They've been neglected and they've been told like, we don't know what to do with them. And since we've been put those plans in, then they tell us, well, we have to change those plans because of the, the second lockdown the governor did. But no other schools were picked out to change those plans but us. I feel this board has done everything responsible. I feel this district office has done everything responsible. And I feel our staff has done everything responsible for what this community needs. We have made plans. We double check plans. We keep adjusting those plans. It's, it's really insulting. It really is. What this, what this board does for this community and for the school district in our personal lives and in our roles as board members is above most board members you'll ever walk into, and me. I'm glad I didn't have to read this tonight. I don't know if I could have done it honestly. And I appreciate Mr. Brazil for taking that out of my hands. I, I know why he did. We want the schools open, but there's a level of safety. There's a level of, we know the community. We know the multifamily's living in one house. We know the multifamily's struggling. We know these kids from the streets of the Keys. We know what they're, what they can do. We, we don't need people, honestly, some of them outside the community telling us what our community needs. Our community's lunches, yes, they do. They need packets at home. By trying to feed the kids and then telling us that's all we care about, it's not what we care about. These kids eat food. It's, it's just amazing how people choose what they want to pick on. And, and yeah, when we open up, I don't think anybody will want to come to public comments. So be happy we're open. And public comments is, is that for you to come and say whatever you choose to say without a dialogue. I've been on this board since two thousand nine. I've had happy times and I've had bad times while we've been yelled at, while we've been congratulated sitting on the, on the public comments. That's what's, that's part of the job. That's what we signed up for. We didn't know we were going to go through some barriers. We didn't know that. I honestly think this board is handling it better than most boards in the state of California by doing what we've done. Our administrative staff has handled it. We do not know what the right decision is. Every single board member will admit to that. We do not know what the right decision is. But we know what we're doing is best for the students and what we think is best for the community. We'll never know what the right decision is, but I sleep at night knowing that I'm protecting these kids by doing what we are. And I think the twenty five for a hundred thousand number is a great number to open up. I'm, I'm excited. And anyway, that really tells me I'm on campus more than anyone. Sometimes teachers are paying, and teachers put in all these hours. If I'm not working, I'm on campus doing something. I'm on every single field trip. I'm on every single sports event. And to be told that I'm a disappointment, it sucks.
Next board meeting is March ninth at five thirty. Close sessions at five thirty, regular sessions at six. We have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a first or a second?
I have a second.
All favorit?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.